Very important.
Three minutes to spare.
It's noticing.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's regular meeting at the Woburn City Council of September 16, 2025. Just a reminder to everyone, tonight's meeting is being recorded for broadcast. Also, please silence your cell phones. If you are able, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Higgins, if you will call a roll, please.
Counsel Campbell.
Present.
Counsel DeMers.
Present.
Counsel DeMambro.
Present.
Counsel Faruo.
Present.
Counsel Mercer Bruin.
Present.
Counsel Popolato.
Present.
Counsel Toro.
Present.
Counsel Viola.
Present.
President Dillon.
Present.
Make a motion to dispense with the previous meeting's minutes and approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the agenda under new petitions is New Path Inc. for a special event permit for a walking event at 147 New Boston Street in area streets on October 4, 2025.
Make a motion to special permit. Be approved.
Second.
There is a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On a special event permit for Woburn Friends of Hostess VNA Care for a special event permit for a road race and health walk with a request for waiver of umbrella liability insurance.
Make a motion to the matter be referred to the committee on public safety and license.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Petitions for 2025 renewal of second-class motor vehicle sales license by the following: David Delaroca, DBA Woburn Auto Sales, 5 Crescent Ave; Robert McSheffrey, DBA Bob McSheffrey Auto Sales at 880 Main Street. Excuse me, I think it's 2026 renewal.
Make a motion to the matter be referred to the committee on public safety and license.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Petition by JMF Auto Performance for a transfer of second-class motor vehicle sales license from Ollie Service Center, Inc. at 310 Main Street.
Same action.
Second.
There is a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
On the petition by NSAR Electric Company for a grant of location at 425 Washington Street.
Make a motion to the matter be referred to public hearing.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
For Presidential Ventures LLC for a special permit at 8 Presidential Way.
Same action.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Petition by Anthony Maragianis for a special permit at, excuse me, did I do, I did Presidential. Did I do Presidential Ventures?
Yes.
Anthony Maragianis at 8 Morrow Drive.
Make a motion to the matter be referred to public hearing.
Second.
A motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
A petition for MHP Realty LLC for a special permit at 10 Commerce Way.
Same action.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
First item on the public hearings is RTH Management Company LLC for a special permit under Section 5.1.29 and Section 5.1, Note 16, to allow for extended business hours of a fast food restaurant at 187 Cambridge Road. A community report from the Committee on Special Permits was received, ought to pass with seven, excuse me, six conditions. There was also a communication dated September 11, 2025, was received from Jim Giuliano, the attorney of the record.
Motion will accept, make a part of the permit record.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Giuliano, how are you tonight?
Very well, Mr. President. Thank you. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano, Giuliano Law Group, 607 Main Street here in Woburn, on behalf of the petitioner, RTH Management. With me here tonight is Rich Hogan, the manager of the LLC. If there's any questions that remain with the council. As you're aware, we did apply for a special permit, opened the hearing on August 19 in accordance with Section 5.129 and Sections 5.1, Note 16, to extend the drive-through hours seven days a week to 2:00 a.m. We did have committee meeting, which obviously requested ought to pass last week, and we are submitting some proposed conditions this week for the decision, if amenable with the, and I can pass these up for the record, with one addition to Condition 5, the applicant shall provide additional exterior trash receptacles on the property in reasonably accessible to patrons, and then make reference to cleaning and making sure that the dumpsters are also clean and upkept accordingly as well. So that was the only change from the proposed conditions, but I could like to submit for the record if I could. Madam Clerk?
That was already received. Is that the communication that was received, Madam Clerk?
It was.
Sorry, it's okay. So I will, I can read into the record again just the change for Condition 5. Again, "The applicant shall provide additional exterior trash receptacles on the property in locations reasonably accessible to patrons and staff in order to reduce litter and promote proper waste disposal, including any and all dumpsters located on the property." That was the additional language to the first sentence. The rest of that condition shall remain the same.
Any questions for Attorney Giuliano?
And just one more thing to add to, Condition 7 was added, so as I mentioned before, the previous decision did not mention the hours of the week and the hours of operation, so we did add that to Condition 7.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion in the second to open the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. Mr. Joyce, how are you tonight?
My name is President Dillon.
Just state your name and address, please, sir.
So my name is Jim Joyce, and I am at Shuam Road right here in Woburn. Appreciate the opportunity to speak at this public hearing in support of the special permit. So President Dillon, distinguished members of the city council, thank you. I am in support of the special permit application for this project. I know as someone who used to work off-shift hours and always trying to find a place to get some food after those hours were over was always a difficult challenge. So I think this really helps with satisfying that requirement where we all work in many different hours now. The other part of this project that I really like is the fact that there is improved trash receptacles that are going in. It will most definitely help with the abutting property, which as you know is the Sheikah Glen area, and that conservation area in Sheikah Glen Brook. And so I'm very, I'm very well aware of some of the trash problems that could be over there, so this is a big step in the right direction, and it also helps with any sort of rodent activity or rodent control that is going into place. One thing I didn't hear was, I didn't hear what the rodent control plan was for this, but I did have an understanding in talking with Counsel Viola that there's been an agreement to use vitamin D3, which is carosuprel. That product is a form of rodent control, which I highly support. It is a very short shelf, a short half-life product. It is, does not bioaccumulate. It does not lead to secondary poisoning of pets, people, wildlife, any of that. So I'm in full support of that. So again, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in this matter?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I'm getting on the motion.
Yes.
I just had a, through the chair, to Clerk Higgins. I have to abstain from the vote because I was not here in August and didn't see the public hearing, but can I make a comment about the conditions?
Please.
Or is that, I just want to make sure I'm within my...
You can participate, you can participate all you want, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You just can't vote on the final.
President Dillon, may I have the floor just for me?
Absolutely, you're at the floor.
The mention of the rodent control was brought up, but again, I don't recall hearing it in the conditions, and if it was, then it's my fault for not hearing you. Is it in the conditions and does it call out exactly what Jim mentioned?
It does. It, Condition 4, actually utilized tarid 3 rodenticide, which is what Mr. Joyce mentioned.
Okay, just want to make sure that's what he was referring to.
The origin of the, of the condition is because of Mr. Joyce, so we appreciate it. But that is in Condition 4.
Oh, okay, I just want to make sure that's what it was referring to.
It is, yes.
Because I didn't recognize the name.
Yep, that's the term of it, yes.
It still sounds, even though it's a friendly version, it still sounds pretty bad.
Sounds pretty bad, but it's better, yeah. But it's better, correct.
Okay, thank you, President Dillon.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Counsel Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel, Counsel. Want to thank you and your petitioner coming forward with this. It's been a long time coming. I know people have looked to getting those hours extended, and I know the area will flourish with it. There haven't been any major issues over there, as we have seen, and I want to thank McDonald's for actually stepping up to do the rodenticide, which they said they're going to do. Hopefully, more and more businesses here in Woburn will see this and they'll follow suit, so thank you.
Thanks for your participation in helping us get here, too, Counsel Viola.
Yes, Counsel DeMambro.
Counsel Giuliano, I just want to commend you on this, on this petition. I think it went really well, and I also, you know, appreciate you reaching out to me privately, letting me know the security camera situation over there and what it consists of. And the conversation that we had, I do feel comfortable with what is there, and I appreciate McDonald's and the ownership for their diligence on the security factors at that location. So I appreciate you and them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counsel.
Anyone else? The will of the council.
Is a motion on the floor to close the public hearing?
There's a motion, and there was a second, yes. Motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Motion to special permit be granted, subject to the conditions as amended this evening.
Second.
There is a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye. Abstained.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
That passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Thank you. Next public hearing is Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts DBA Milton Rents for a special permit under Section 5.1, subsection 45, for the rental of compact construction equipment, including accessory repair and storage facilities at 210 New Boston Street. A communication, there's several. Communication dated August 7, 2025, was received from Thomas Quinn, the building commissioner. Further communication dated August 11, 2025, was received from Attorney Malcolm H. Huck. Further communication dated August 15, 2025, was received from Ethan Linkstrom, VP Construction Operations, as well as a communication dated September 11, 2025, was received from John Cashell, the planning director.
Make a motion to the communications received, made part of the permanent record.
Second.
The motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Attorney Huck, how are you tonight?
Mr. President, very well, thank you. Mr. President, council members, for the record, I'm Malcolm Hauck. My office is at 7 Win Street here in Woburn, as it has been for a while. I represent Milton Real Properties of Massachusetts LLC, and one of their business enterprises is known as Milton Rents, and they're in the process of developing the final plans and have developed the plans for the redevelopment of the property at 210 New Boston Street, Woburn, now presently operated by Asphalt Services, which is in the process of moving and relocating its, and relocating its operations elsewhere. In summary, what Milton Real Properties and Milton Rents is looking to obtain a special permit under Section 5.1, 40, paragraph 45, for the rental of truck trailers, including accessory repair and storage facilities, in addition, the parking of vehicles overnight pursuant to zoning, zoning ordinance, Section 5.1, paragraph 57B. Milton Rents provides to, exist, to contractors what they refer to as compact construction equipment that is very much similar to the enterprise presently in place at 195 New Boston Street. Is that Sunrise? Sunbelt. And they represent, they rent the same type of equipment, small excavators, power lifts, and various short-term rental equipment to contractors. And they also engage in the sales of personal safety equipment, obviously, for people that are customers and going to be operators of this equipment. There are some rental of power tools to individual contractors, but that's minimal. There's usually, in accordance with the similar operations of Milton Rents elsewhere, between 100 and 120 pieces of equipment that will be on the property, coming and going, and being rented, serviced, and returned. Milton Rents will operate from this Woburn facility five vehicles that will be registered in the city of Woburn, and they are heavy-duty 10-wheel ramp trucks, light-duty 6-wheel ramp trucks, two large F-series pickup trucks as service vehicles. The number of, the number of employees on the site are about 12 in number, which consist of office personnel, sales representatives, different classes of commercial drivers license holders, and road and shop technicians. Servicing is done in a garage on the property. Inbound traffic is going to be onsite petitioners, that's onsite employees of the petitioner, which is going to be about 12 in number. Outbound vehicle traffic will be personal automobile traffic of the employees as they retire at home at the end of the business day. And there will be some inbound and outbound traffic, depending on the activity of the rental, the equipment rentals. The business hours are proposed to be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and employees tasked for CCE, compact construction equipment, CCE if I might, will report to work at approximately 6:00 a.m., but the general business hours in the office are customarily from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. There's an existing 9,250 square-foot building, a portion of which will be abolished and consolidated, and will result in a building with 3,500 square feet of office area, office and retail area, and approximately 11,000 square feet of industrial space, including a wash bay and the existing garage, and storage canopy and service bays. The demolition will result in approximately 3,600 square feet of slabware, concrete slab, the present floor of the one-story building to be demolished, and that will be used for display of compact construction equipment to be rented. Obviously, the, there's a security issue, so in the end, when construction is complete, there will be, will be gated and surrounded by fence. There's no signs, there's anticipated to be no billboard signs, but there will be, be subject to a sign permit from the building commissioner, and be largely entrance, exit, in-out delivery, and direction signs. Exterior lighting will be simply be by lamps and fixtures attached to the building walls, and there has been a, I understand, a photometric plan already submitted with the plans. Snow management, there is designated a, an area for snow storage, and snow accumulated by plowing will be exported primarily as soon as possible. If there's any questions? I have a number of people here, and the principals of Milton Rents can answer any questions, as I said, that I either can't or should not answer.
Thank you, sir.
President Dillon?
Yes.
Procedural comment. He did submit, the attorney mentioned that they have to amend the petition to include 5.1, subsection 57B, so I don't know if anyone wants to do that or at a later point.
Make a motion to allow for the amendment of the special petition.
Second. There is a motion in the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
I did, I did request that as amendment here, as opposed to a separate filing.
Thank you, Clerk Higgins. Counsel DeMambro.
Attorney Huck, we've gone over this a couple of times. We've done an onsite visit with Commissioner Quinn. I think we're still, we're still trying to figure out some logistics on this. I am going to recommend to the council that this does go to committee.
That's good.
You know, I'd like to see a final print. I'm sure the rest of my fellow consellers would also like to see the final print, the layout, the renderings. If you could put it in a, you know, a computer form, you know, we can, we can show everything clearer, again, with the amount of vehicles, vehicles, heavy equipment, so on and so forth, the type of, for some, it may not be...
Type and category, the question you're asking.
The category they are, as well as some of the renderings and pictures, so people have a better understanding on, you know, mini excavators, kids' steers.
As I understand it, the operation has been not dissimilar to that already at 195 New Boston Street.
Just so everybody has a...
Power lifts, not large excavators, small backhoes, smaller backhoes that can be transported on ramp trucks, and that sort of thing. Very small bulldozers. Brad? Maybe give a better, a better idea of what the inventory is. This is Brad Farran.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Mr. President, my name is Brad Farran, F-A-R-R-A-N. I'm the corporate facilities manager for Milton Cat slash Milton Rents. First of all, thank you for this, and we're looking very excited to be here in your city and to contribute to it. And those that are familiar with the existing operation over at New Boston Street, I think you'll see with the renderings and what we're planning on doing here with the plans that we've been working with Mr. Quinn and the departments, I think we'll be very happy with what the end product is going to be from what's there now. The simplest way, and we've put this in the narrative, I think it is in your package, is if you think of United Rentals, Ascent Bell Rentals, we, it's not the mom and pop that customers, you know, the Weekend Warrior comes in and rents something for the weekend. This is contractors, aerial lifts, and what we refer to as BCP, Building Construction Products, D6 and smaller, D4s, D5s, smaller loaders, things that don't take the 50-foot, 53-foot trailers to deliver. It's mostly rack bodies and things of that nature, a lot of aerial lifts. That's why the equipment count is high. We can put a lot of those small lifts to what the attorney Malcolm talked about a little bit. We're working through demolition of about 10,000 square feet of that existing building that will, it's the older part of that, and we've been tracking with the non-traditional work plan with Mass DEP from that standpoint, working with Ty and Bond. We got VHB who is working with the EPA because of that site, and we've already submitted our work plan to them as well and got some initial feedback. And then Mr. Quinn's been phenomenal as far as the communication with the planning department back and forth. Thank you for your, for your site visit and giving us some direction that way. So yeah, we're, we're here and willing to answer any questions and try to paint that picture for you as clear as possible.
Yeah, that's, that's the one thing, Mr. President, if you mind. I just, I just want to make sure that the council has a good understanding, you know, what a D6 is, which is a bulldozer and so on and so forth, and the renderings. These definitely will help the council as a whole to get a better understanding. I do understand there's going to be demolition, quite a bit of demolition. There's also some concerns I've seen from Commissioner Quinn through communications, you know, in relative to the narrative on the special permit. As a matter of fact, he also mentioned stormwater management, the oil water separators, which I do have information on that. But again, this, this was brought up, you know, August 7, so I just want to make sure he's crystal clear on everything that's going on down there, as well as the, there was some storm drain issues down there that would definitely, I know that you guys are still in the midst of working through all of that. I just want to make sure that that's addressed properly with the existing tenant that's there, you know, before you guys start what you need to do. And at some point, you're probably going to have to reach out to our DPW superintendent, Superintendent Duran, and probably have a discussion with him and have some communication with him on what's going on down there.
And we've had those conversations along with utilities. I mean, one of the things that Mr. Quinn mentioned about how we cap off the utilities, we have got into those details in the full design drawings, which are at 90% right now. We have those details about capping off. We just met with, you know, we let Asphalt Services, we extended a lease to allow them to stay there while we was going through this. We just met with them last week. They moved a significant amount of material out of there this, this week, and we've kind of shot for October 15th for them to kind of vacate. Might be a couple of weeks beyond that in the office area, but we're working on that. The concern about the catch basin and the washing outside, we've addressed that with the design drawings and the details on that piece to capture that, to make sure, because we don't want that responsibility and liability afterwards. So yeah, I, I think if you see the full drawings that we have, have completed, I think we answer a lot of those things that we'd be more than happy to sit down and go through.
And, and that's, I would probably like, I would probably put the request in that I meet with you prior to our committee meeting, and this way, the whole package comes to my fellow consuls, and when you guys take and you present all of it, it's one nice neat package and everything's tightened up. So that is what I'll be requesting this evening. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who have any questions?
Since it came up, addressing the comments of September 11th regarding, I think it was from the planning, planning director, a couple of, a couple of points, the five conditions of approval, plans are in, plans are going to be substantially in conformity with the site plan. They're still in, in some process of preparation and finalization. Road and control was, was raised as an issue, and that there is an existing road and control contract, and obviously, that will be renewed and maintained by Milton Rents, and there will, there will be the periodic inspection reports given, sent to the Board of Health and to Inspeccional Services, at least on a monthly basis. Snow storage, there is in the final plan, a snow, a snow storage area, and one of the, one of the means and methods of snow removal will be to remove it and not stockpile it in the front-facing portion of the, the business, the business sales office and, and sales and administrative offices. There was a question about job site gang boxes and temporary storage. Post-construction, there will be none. As far as signs concerned, that will be subject to a proper sign permit issued by the building commissioner, and there's going to be no billboards, but primarily directional signs, in-out entrance, exit.
Excellent.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Just briefly a comment. Some of the conditions outlined that were taken from the Bond project have to do with construction and storage of material, which I don't think are relevant to this project. That's just a comment, they can stay or go, but I don't think they're relevant to the business that's going in here, such as storing debris and material from other job sites and, and things like that. That may, if you're going to meet, that may be something to help eliminate that, your call. Through the chair.
Counselor Demanbo.
Mr. President, I am aware of that. It was used as a reference point through the plant, planning. I have talked to Director Cashell on that. He said it was for reference purposes only, but I'm fully well-aware that it really doesn't match up with what this petitioner is going to do on that site. That was for bond with heavy construction use as a lay-down yard. This is more of a rental company, like the gentleman said, is for the heavy equipment and, you know, rental of, you know, small mini equipment. So it's, again, it's probably just, like he said, as for references only, for when I have to take and pull the conditions and put the conditions together.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are you inventoryed for future jobs? That's not a part of the business operation of Milton Rents.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to open a public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one.
Make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the regular meeting of the City Council on October 7, and that the matter be referred to the committee on special permits.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda for public hearings is Adriana Rodriguez for a special permit under section 5.1 subsection 57A for the accessory storage or parking of two storage containers at 494 Main Street. A communication dated August 7, 2025 was received from Thomas Quinn, the building commissioner. Further, a communication dated September 10, 2025 was received from John Cashell.
Make a motion that communications be received, made part of the permanent record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. How are you this evening?
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Adriana Rodriguez, and this is Juliana Caldera. I live at 26 Beacon Street in Burlington, Mass. She's going to be speaking on my behalf.
We're talking.
Can I have your last name again, Juliana?
Caldera, C-A-L-D-E-I-R-A.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having us. A little introduction about the business. This is located at 494A Main Street. It is called Casanova. It's been there since 2013. There was an expansion back in 2018, if I'm not mistaken, and it used to be one building, and now we have two locations built into one. And since then, the business has been growing, thank God. And because of that, we, we are looking to get more space, especially around the holidays and special dates throughout the year. So last year, we felt like we lost sales, especially 4th of July, Thanksgiving and Christmas, because we didn't have the space to storage the meats and all the products that we carry to, for the, for the store. And doing some research and looking for options, we came across the storage containers. And those were, we, we thought, not just on a price point-wise, but also because it is safe, it is sanitized, it's, it's perfect against rodents. So we looked into the, the table use under the zoning code, and on, on line 60, it said that because of the location where we are, we said we had the right to use. So we got into the, in touch with the company that rents out those containers, and we got them there. First, we got the dry one, and then a couple weeks later, we got the, the refrigerated one. Everything was fine until we got into an altercation and problems with the, with the neighbor next door. He was having trouble having the dumpster company come in and get his, his dumpster, dumpster and trash out. So we tried to communicate with him, tried to work something out with him. We actually told him that we had that company before, we had an issue with that company as well. We switched companies and everything was fine. He refused to work with us, and a couple days later, we actually got, before that, he actually said, so you're not willing to work with me, the meaning, so you're not going to do what I want. So a couple days later, we get a call from the building commissioner. After speaking with Tom, we came in, came in, we spoke with him, and he pointed out another section on the code, which was 57B. A, 57A. And, and was, and when we spoke, I understood his point of view, and he, he even said that it was, it was sort of like an interpretation. My interpretation was not wrong, but his interpretation was not wrong as well. And that's why we decided to come in and ask for a special permit, because we understood where he was coming from.
But in meanwhile, he allowed me to have the containers there until meet of September. Just want to point that out to you.
Yes. And everything was according to plan, but until we got to a point where it became very personal. We recently received a letter from John Cashell, who never, actually, the letter that was sent to the president and the council members, and we never got a call from, from John. We never got an email from John. So he never got our side of the story. Instead, we felt like he was choosing the side without knowing exactly what happened. So we did not, just got the containers there and then requested. On this letter, he says that we should always support the business owners and their plans to expand and enhance their business operations, preferably however, all caps, not after the facts. So it's not because we're trying to be sneaky, we're trying to do something wrong here. We went to the code, and we looked into the code, and we honestly thought we're doing the right thing. And once we realized there was a different interpretation of the code, that's when we decided to go and, and go through the proper channels and come to you guys and request a special permit. And the reason why we're doing so, it is because our business needs the space, especially during these holidays. We lost a lot of money last year, and we, we did a comparison between last year's 4th of July and this year, and it was more than 30% in sales, so we actually generated more this year. And right now, we don't have the, the refrigerator container in, it's already out. You only have the dry container there now, and we were, we are looking for, to get it back, if possible, during the other holiday, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Oh, yes, another thing, another intimidation that we felt like, even this morning, when we got a text message from the same neighbor saying that he was going to come here and speak on, against us tonight. That's why I keep saying, it seems more personal than anything else, but we would like to have this permit granted, so we can go on and continue to serve the community and build our business.
And just to mention that the land belongs to that property. I see as a courtesy for them to get passed through. And I even spoke with my landlord today, so it's the same thing. If I had a house and my parking lot on the back of the house, I would allow my neighbor to go through my parking lot. So he keeps saying that his dumpsters can get in. Their tenants are here to speak against, saying that they go, they need the dumpster. But that's my, my land, you know, like, I'm allowing you as a courtesy to go through, but that's, so I don't understand, you know, it's like, I tried to work with them several times, especially with the dumpster. I told him to divide the dumpster, to put it together, because I like seeing clean and they're, they're messy, you know, I've been trying to work with them since I got there, and he refused to put it together. And I believe, because he makes a lot of money on all the tenants that he is renting and, you know, dividing the dumpsters, but he refused. Why he would refuse if his problem is to get the trash out? Why we cannot share the dumpster? So I just want to remind him and everybody that it's a courtesy for him to pass through my, my land and my property, you know? So I'm just trying to grow my business. I don't want to have problem with neighbors. I've been trying to work with them for a long time, and I feel defeated, but I'm here to, just to seek help and see all of the other options I could, if not the dumpster, if I have other options to grow my business, because where they are.
The containers.
The containers. Where they are, they are occupied three parking space. It's the same thing if I have three cars there. It doesn't change anything. So what's the problem? Do you know, it's like, I don't get it.
The, the containers do not go through the line where the cars would meet. It goes exact, a little, actually, a little bit less than as if we had three cars parked there. It's equivalent to three, having three cars in a parking spot. We have two containers going side by side like this, but they don't go through that line. So even if we remove the containers and we have three parked cars there, it will be the same thing.
Yeah, and if they say, oh, people are parking on the street, that's not on me. Again, you know, it's like, I'm trying to do my business. I don't have control of people that drives around and park on the street, right, to block the house. I saw the other neighbor there. That's pretty much, I think that's what she's going to say, but she's the one that parks her car on top of the sidewalk and the top of the street. So they are very hard, I just want to run my business. I'm not, and it seems very personal here. Whatever I do there, it seems personal. It seems like they have right on my land, and they don't.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Counselor Demanbo.
Do you know the square footage of your, your, your store? How many square feet is your store?
2,300.
2,300? Is there a basement in that, in that building?
It's all together.
It's all together.
It's, ah, it's included.
So 2,300?
I couldn't hear the response. What was the response?
2,300.
No, was there a basement? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's included in the square footage.
So 2,300 total, top and?
Yes.
Basement? Main floor and basement?
So probably it's 120 upstairs.
Is there an access elevator or a chute or some sort of conveyor or anything that you store anything down in that basement? Do you, do you store any product in that basement?
Yes, we do. The only elevator that we have is the, the service elevator for customers, not for, for bringing.
The extension, you know, of the property, I took over a jewelry that used to be there, and I did everything according with the city. They request me to put an elevator for the customer, and I had that done. They request me to do certain kind of box in the dumpster, in the basement, I had that done. I did everything according to the city, whatever, yeah, you know, to have it. So I do have production downstairs, and I do have storage downstairs, but my, my, I still, you know, I'm growing, and I don't have space, you know? I look into options, renting on other place, and I look all out of options, but in order for me not to lose this, say, on this summer, that was the, the option that it came that I thought was the safest, especially because of the rats and things like that, you know? And so that's it. And I looked the zone, I thought I couldn't do it, and the six it says that I can, if, if it's for my business to grow. But then Todd pointed that it, Tom pointed that it's because it's word container on section 7, 57. section 57A, I would have to get a special permit. And that's why I said, okay, so if that's what I have to do, I'll try it, you know, it's, they know whatever it has, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor DeMears.
So on page two of the plans that were presented, I'm looking at the exterior of the building to the right of that porta potty. So that wooden structure was your way of screening the previous container? Am I correctly understanding that? There's a wooden, a wooden structure with an angled roof?
I don't, I don't get your question. Could you repeat again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering how we're screening these containers? Because one of the large debates we've had as a city council is when these containers are out there, they're an eyesore to certain people. So we want to make sure that they're properly screened and taken care of, so it's secure. And it's not something that people are looking at constantly, the big blue Conex container.
No, 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 it's all.
No, well, there's no screening. Well, he's trying to say if we're hiding the container, if it's in plain view, it is in plain view.
It's in plain view?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And I know that it says the Casanova Butcher Shop and Cafe.
Yep.
Do you have, like, seating in there?
No, I don't.
And like, are you serving any food prepared or anything like that?
I don't have enough space for seating in there.
Okay. And we're using three private spots, not three spots that are municipally operated?
Correct. We have a total of 12. We're using three.
Okay. And you are aware that special permit for site storage of storage containers, it's for a year, and then you'd have to reapply?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a letter for that, to the same for a year.
All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I appreciate those questions where this falls on my wad. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for clarification, I'm looking, I see what Councilor DeMears is saying, I looked at Google Earth, and there seems to be some type of wooded shed structure on the back of the building. Is that still there?
No, it's not.
That's not, okay.
It used to be there, so it got smaller, you know, for what I need. That's why I start searching. I saw other types of shed, but it's very weak and very, it's just, you know, it doesn't, so I, it was just an option to be safer, safe there, you know, especially for the water, for the rats.
And would the shipping containers go to the left of that if you're coming out that back door, or would they be to the right of that?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The shipping, the containers that you're putting in, would they be in the same area where that wooden structure was?
Yes.
It would be? All right, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Papalatto.
Yep, thank you, President. We've had issues with storage containers in the past, and I know that Tom Quinn has very much been on top of all this stuff. Has he been abreast of any of this? Have you discussed this with him?
Yes, we have, yes.
And is he supportive of your project?
Yes. And he's the one who said to us to come and apply for the permits. We have spoken with him, yes.
Okay.
Thomas, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one quick question.
Yes, Councilor Campbell.
You don't feel that the loss of the three spaces is going to make a difference with your business? I mean, three spaces is a huge loss, I would think.
We have other, we have a total of 12, and not everyone comes in all the same time. Maybe at times, yes, but it's not, maybe at specific times, there'll be more than 12 cars parked there, but that's not usual.
What I see, I lose more money if I don't have the product to sell when the customer gets there than having, you know, what's the point to have the customer there if I don't have the product to sell? So.
Okay.
That's what I, you know, came first. Like, I'm not providing for the customers because I don't have space, because I have to place an order with the companies, like, for the weekend especially, you know, ahead. So they don't deliver every day. I wish they would deliver every day, you know, so I could get the products for the amount of space that I have, but they don't. And in order for me to get cheaper or to get some kind of products, I have to buy like half a pallet, a pallet. So, and it's really hard for me to store those, those size of products.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Just from the, my point of view, this is located in my ward. I have spoken with Commissioner Quinn in regards to this. So during this conversation, I just want to clarify, you're looking for one container, not two, correct?
One container for the whole year, and the refrigerator for summertime and holidays like Thanksgiving and Christmas.
Okay, so.
But I already removed that, because they're expensive, you know, the refrigerator, especially, it's not a refrigerator container, it's a cooler inside a container. And they are like 2,500 a month, so it is expensive, you know, and so I don't need the whole year, because I need for those special time of the year that I'm losing money for not having the product at the store. So I did that, you know, the calculation of it, and it's still worth it to have it at least for those months.
As we move forward on this, if you get granted the one, shall we call it, the dry container, the non-refrigerated container, that's going to be satisfactory, you're not going to be looking for the refrigerated one during your peak season? You're going to deal with just the one?
Can you, I'm sorry. So if I, if I get a grant from the dry one, I won't have the refrigerator one, or how does that work again? I'm sorry.
Well, what's in front of us tonight, I believe, is just one you're looking for.
Yeah, I applied for two, because I don't know how that works. I, using the other one, refrigerator.
Mr. President, just to clarify, it is two.
It is two.
It's the, it's the refrigerated. I think the petitioner is letting us know that the refrigerated unit would not be around, it would only be for special occasions, for special seasons.
How large is that compared to the one that's there now? Same size, smaller?
Same size.
Same size.
I just see that the one near now, which I've visited the site.
Right.
Takes up a fair amount of space. Don't, do you have any layout showing us the second one?
Yes.
It's in the plan, I saw that. Okay. I just like to visualize it in person, which I could do, and I go back out there, I just lay it out. I'm just trying to grasp, one, seems reasonable.
Right.
Two, I'm not so sure, but that's just my point of view.
Okay. I put it in that, in, in.
Arisonto.
Arisonto way, because I thought of putting in one like that, but it seems that would go further the parking space for a car, so that would affect more. So if I go vertical, I would take three spot, half of that, but I wouldn't have a problem for people, you know, having them to pass by as a courtesy.
Thank you. Councilor DeMambo, then Councilor Toro.
Have you looked into, I understand what you have there now, you have a 20-foot Conex container, it's approximately eight feet probably wide. Is there any way you can, does that company manufacture or distribute smaller containers? And could, could there possibly, could there be a possibility of you limiting it, say, they make a 15 footer? And the reason why I'm doing it, because I'm looking at the maps, you know, on Google, and I'm looking at the back spot. Let's face it, there's not a lot of room there. So space is, you know, a high-end commodity. So I'm trying to take, trying to see if there's a way to get a smaller container, condense it. Do you use the full 20 by eight foot container, I mean, from front to back, top to bottom, or could you, do you think you could take and limit it to a smaller container, which I'm sure might possibly also be less on the rental, but it also saves space? As well as, you know, everybody that's in that building, the tenants and your neighbor, I mean, housekeeping's going to be a priority, you're going to have to tighten it all up deck there, because, so that the, you know, the management company, the waste management company, or whoever's coming in to empty the cotting of the dumpsters, the cotting service, I'm just trying to, try to figure out a way to limit the amount of space those take up, but still get you the benefit of having an ice, an ice container, as well as a dry goods container, and still allowing enough room for, you know, other tenants and your neighbor to be able to navigate and negotiate what he needs to do.
It is possible on the refrigerator for me to go down 10 feet, that half, because I noticed that it is good amount, but I do expect my business to grow, but I don't need that much on the refrigerator. On the dry container, I do use it, but I could try to go at 15, you know, but I, I do, I do use it, the whole thing right now, you know, so. But on the refrigerator, yeah, definitely. I even thought about like a trailer that would park as a car on the wheels. But then again, it falls, when I spoke with Thomas, he said, you also need a special permit for that, whatever, it's a trailer, if it's on wheels, if it's parked there, you got to apply for a special permit. So.
But it is a possibility to go smaller, yes.
I would make that suggestion.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Toro.
Thank you. So right now, there's one container. If the second container goes in there, depth-wise, does it fit within the parking spaces?
Yes.
Does, so, okay. It seems like, and good for you, business is growing. But even if these were to be approved, whether it's one, two, or even if it was denied, this seems like a very temporary solution. It seems like, and again, a good, great for you, seems like you're looking to grow your business.
Right.
If that is, if that is going to continue to be the case, looks like you may need to find another location. So just a, just a, you know, suggestion, that whatever the council decides to do eventually, if your business is going to continue to grow, this is a Band-Aid on something, a good problem to have. But you might want to start looking for another location that's going to serve your needs, because this puts us in a tough situation. And understanding, I'd like to, I'd like to say that everyone does everything with the right intentions, it's not always the case. But you put these containers in there before the special permit was issued, right? We certainly, we certainly want to make sure we help all the businesses, but we have to be cognizant and understanding for the needs of the city and the other residents and stuff. So, again, whatever we decide to do, I think it's probably not a bad idea to start looking for another spot eventually, just a suggestion, because hopefully your business grows and you turn into a huge butcher shop, right? And again, but that's just my two cents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Papalatto.
Thank you. I would, I wouldn't be comfortable approving this unless we got something in writing from the building commissioner. So I feel like you've had these conversations, and it seems like he's supportive of it, but I would like to see something in writing before proceeding with this.
There is, President Dillon, may I?
Yes, please.
There was a communication you accepted earlier from the building commissioner.
Yeah.
You accepted it to the record. It's dated.
Seven.
It was dated August 7th, 2025, there's a letter in there, from the building commissioner.
Okay. And he is supportive of this action?
I can't, you'd have to read it for yourself, I can't.
Councilor Campbell.
I'm a little concerned about it. We've had issues over the years with storage containers. One of the biggest issues is, once a petitioner comes in, they have one, it seems like they end up having it for five years, six years, seven years, eight years, they don't end up coming back. And it's something where it's, where it's important to come back every year. I think my other concern is that, in my view, storage containers can be an eyesore, and how do we mask this so that it's not an eyesore for the area? And I'm concerned with two, two storage containers. I guess my other, I'm listening to Councilor Toro as well, I'm feeling like one year's going to come by, going to go by very quickly, and then even if you come back here, there might be a chance you don't get it, that it's not allowed. And then what do you do at that point?
Well, we start looking right now. Options by now.
I've been looking, and that was the fastest way to go. And I did look to the code, and I was brought, I had attention, the six, it's not something that I put it intentionally, trying to be, you know, not to follow the rules. That's, that's not me at all, you know?
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I know that it was a mistake, I completely understand that, yeah.
I got to look for a storage space, and I've been looking at the city for.
Okay.
So.
I guess those are my concerns. I don't like the idea of two containers. You're saying that they're going to fit in the three parking spaces, two containers will fit in the parking spaces there? I think it's wonderful that you're growing, so I don't want to say, I don't want to stop that from happening, but if you're growing in one year, I just feel like you're going to need more storage containers at that point. So I think I'm okay with one, I don't know how I feel yet about two. I'm just, I just want to let you know about that.
Okay.
And of course, I would have to refer to the counselor of Ward Four, President Dillon.
Thank you.
Three, excuse me.
Thank you.
Councilor Fallou.
Thank you, Mr. President. A brief editorial comment. We're putting everything we have into redeveloping downtown, and we have a business that's thriving that's been here since 2013. I'm not saying yes or no to the containers, we need to vet that through and work it, but I think if we have a case in front of us, we have somebody that's making it work downtown, we should do anything we can, not to waive the rules and not to give them something that they're not entitled to, but to try to find a way to work with them to make them continue to survive, because we don't need another empty store downtown. And, you know, they've been around since I worked for the city back then, and they've always been there. And, you know, I remember the jewelry store, I remember your little store tucked in next to it, and we have a success story here. And I'm not suggesting we give them the keys to the kingdom, nor am I suggesting we just give them everything they want, but this is a case that we, we need to work with to try to make it, try to make it happen. Because if she does move into another city or another section of the city, that's another empty corner downtown, and I'd love to not have that be the case. And that's editorial comment, not arguing one way or the other on the condo, on the containers, but just that it works. And when you're sitting at the red light at Salem Street, as we all drive by, look at the, the community that they serve. They serve their community, and they're going in and out, and they're getting cultural food, and they're getting things from their homeland, and, you know, it's, I think we need to make this work, and whatever we can do, smaller boxes, bigger boxes, taller boxes, whatever, that's not my thing. Public safety is my thing. But it's, it's something that I've watched them grow, and I'm here to try to do anything I can to try to make it work for them, whatever that is. I need to leave that up to those smarter than me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I think a motion to open the public hearing.
Second. There is a motion and a second to open the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward, state your name and address, please, sir. How are you tonight? Just right up to the microphone, if you would, sir.
Good evening. I was actually really surprised.
Have your name and address.
I apologize. My name's Michael Palmer. I own the building at 474, 482 Main, more recognizable formerly as the Tanner Tavern or the Black and Orange, so now currently as a dentist office and a Polish Russian restaurant. So I was really surprised how she characterized this situation with me, because I did send her a text message today saying, I'm sorry that I have to speak against you, because I am very pro-business, and anything I could do to support her, I would. This can be highlighted in the history of that, one example of the history of that property. I was approached by the city of Woben Board of Health a long time ago, maybe 15, 20 years, because that back area is so congested and so tight, there is, it's very difficult to park, and even more so to have dumpsters. So at the time, the Board of Health approached me was because, we all know the area, we had Tanner Tavern, Pizza Market, the Asian Restaurant at the time, I think it's now, I have the name written now, Gongcha, at 486. And that was formerly a laundromat and now Casanova International. So I was approached by the city to see if I could come up with a solution to consolidate and work cooperatively with the dumpster. So I located a dumpster on my property that serviced all those buildings. The Pizza Market and Gongcha own no land behind their properties. Their property is restricted to their building footprint only. Their regresses enter onto my property. Additionally, Casanova, which was formerly. Additionally, Casanova, which was formerly the laundromat, I have a legal easement that runs through the middle of that parking lot, because our parking lots are in tandem. So legally registered easement that allows me to access the property. Laundromat went away, Casanova changed ownership. And Adriana chose to go beyond the agreement and get her own containers. Fine by me. I still cooperatively work with Pizza Market. Gongcha, I think they personally take away their trash somehow, some way. So my rent, my four apartments above, my two, my two businesses renting from me and Pizza Market contribute, and I manage that function. She approached me, I'm gonna say maybe six, eight months ago, to, um, work on a new idea on the dumpsters. Uh, when you pulled into the parking lot and you run parallel with her building, I had it directly above my rare egress staircase. She didn't, she didn't, that wasn't working for all the properties. So I had almost immediately, uh, and I say immediately, maybe two, three months, I moved it to the center aisle of my parking area. I have approximately eleven spaces. Ten designated for parking for my tenants, one designated for the dumpster. I believe she has ten spots as well. Now, getting to this, uh, issue. She, um, Adriana, located a twenty by eight container originally. I think that the pictures you guys are seeing is she had built something off the back of the building. Um, I think that has since gone, and now she runs an eight by twenty container parallel to the back of her building. At one point, she had the two containers, so sixteen's are taking up the three spaces, and that was good for her. Terrible for me, because my waste company, uh, Win Waste, cannot maneuver turning radiuses around those two containers and have a lot of difficulty that doing the turning radius off Mans Court with one container. And that's because, um, there is sidewalk parking, street parking on Mans Court at Main Street. It's probably a forty-foot length, so you'll get two or three vehicles parking. So when you make a turn from Main Street either direction, running with her building, you'll get two or three cars. So now you choke down Mans Court to minimal access. You get, you get a truck. You do not get a dump truck. And now to hook that left, if there's even cars in the directly abutting spaces along her back building or, or the containers, you cannot make that turn. So what's happened in the past three, four months, uh, we have been communicating a little bit. Not enough, but I'm busy, she's busy, that's fine. I've accrued over two thousand dollars, almost two thousand dollars, in additional expenses for my waste management company. Because when they, I'm on a three-day schedule, Monday, Wednesday, Friday pickup, single container. When they don't, when they can't pick up on the schedule, then they do an, an added pickup, uh, which they'll charge you for. Or if they don't pick up, the container will become overfilled. And they'll penalize you for that as well. So again, almost two thousand dollars in the past three, four months while these containers have been in place. So just to run through my notes, uh, this is very, just, I did this at my kitchen table. I apologize. I didn't have time to organize it. When I, so I'm a restaurant guy. And when I applied for my restaurant permit, I, part of the planning process was parking. So I, I don't know if that applies to a grocery store, but I had certain parking requirements. Downtown Woben was unique at the time. I don't know if they've changed it. But they weren't required because the municipal, the city was responsible in the downtown area, so I was not required. But like the restaurant I'm operating now in Reading, we needed one spot per three seats. I don't know if she's required to that. Again, she has ten. Whether it's one container or two, she's using three spaces for that, and she's using one or two spaces for her dumpster containers. So she's using three or four spaces out of ten, so she's left with six to five spaces. Again, I don't know if that is a concern for the city. The property that she leases is twenty-one thirty-five square feet on the main level and twenty-one thirty-five in the basement, so forty-three, forty-two, seven total square footage, um, according to the assessors database in the city of Woben. What she's special permitting applying for is approximately three hundred square feet of additional storage, which is not really a lot. It's, uh, it's awkward and, and cumbersome on the exterior of the building. I don't know why she doesn't have, and I'm not being accusatory, and I don't wanna be Mr. Know-It-All, but three hundred square feet out of twenty-one thirty-five in the basement storage, I'm, I'm curious why she needs the extra storage. Um, again, from a restaurant point of view, when I applied again through the planning boards for different cities, City of Melrose, Town of Winchester, City of Woben, Town of Reading, they'll often ask you, "How do you, how do you manage your product?" You know, "How do you know your walk-in refrigerator is gonna be large enough? How do you know your dry storage is gonna be lo-" You know, mostly the refrigerated side, the freezer side, because that starts involving health code issues, right? You wanna control temperatures on product. And my answer to them is this: You manage the product using the space you have, and then you get additional, uh, deliveries. So, so rather than taking four days' worth of stuff, so my restaurant in Reading is a hundred and fifty-three-seat restaurant. We take our primary deliveries twice a week on a hundred and fifty-three seats, full-service restaurant, liquor, full menu. My question, a, a food service question, is how she cannot take daily deliveries? Because daily deliveries are available. What often happens is you'll be asked for a minimum to take a delivery. But the delivery, according to her success, and I'm happy for her, she, it sounds like she should be able to take daily deliveries. I mean, you don't have to take a tractor-trailer. You can take a van, and you can take a box truck, delivery. So again, she has twenty-one thirty-five on top of twenty-one thirty-five. I don't know how the basement's set up. I think that's a question that needs to be asked. In the building code, there's often setback requirements. I don't know if there's a setback requirement on the easement that I have, registered easement, because I'm right through the middle of her parking lot. I know the typical, you know, ten-foot setback, twenty-foot setback. I don't know if, if that comes into play. We're talk, we're talking right now about the summer, where everything's nice and clean. You know, what about the winter, when the, when you need snow storage? And she's got no snow storage, right? Because now you're, you can't push against the building, and you can't push to the, to the containers she's proposing, because those contain, pushed to the containers would be center aisle. So what you're left with is the property that you abuts, the parking lot, which is the city of Woben, excuse me. And if you stop pushing snow, anybody that's ever pushed snow, you're gonna create a three-foot snowbank. So now, on a typical parking space, you just, you just eliminated it because you can't fit it unless you're gonna put a compact car. Uh, I think that's about all I have, um, other than, again, if anybody knows that area, and I think everybody does know that area. Mans Court, on one side coming up, is all multifamily homes with a lot of vehicles. So their primary vehicles will go in their private spaces. The added vehicles will go across on the vacant land that is city land. And, and often they'll ride the sidewalk up the right side of the street, the opposite side of the street. So you just, that, that, I mean, it's just a dangerous situation anyway. I mean, if you ever needed fire rescue to get into the back of the building, which is a concern, if you wanted to put a machine back there, you'd never get it, you know? I mean, you, you'd absolutely not get it with one container or two. And I'm, I'm no problem solver. She, it seems like she's villainizing me, but, um, there are often, what are they called? Often restaurants and food service places will do off-site storage if they outgrow their space. I know the Ninety-Nine Restaurant Group used to have a place, um, down the commissary. They would run a commissary. They'd run all their product out of the commissary. They'd have extra storage, this and that. And to Mr. Toro's point, you know, good for you. You've grown your business. You know, maybe that has to be the storefront, and maybe the storage has to be, I mean, you, you know, maybe you can rent a storage space versus, um, just confusing that back area, because that back area in Mans Court is very, very overly taxed. That's, those are my points.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just a point of information. The city is in the process of increasing the parking in the back, all the way down Mans Court to the left. When it's done, we're hoping forty to fifty spots in there, which will help this situation. The Traffic Commission has viewed the parking as you enter Mans Court on the left-hand side, and they have, if my memory is correct, I believe it's already gone to the parking, the Traffic Commission, and already has been okayed with the city council to have no parking on the left-hand side as you enter. Counselor Demanbo, you're on the Traffic Commission. Does this ring a bell?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not, the signs aren't put up now because there's work going on. There's gonna be sidewalks installed, hopefully. So it's kinda all an act, uh, progress and, and, and flux right now. But that is the hopeful end result, which will help some of this situation as far as parking and entering and leaving Mans Court. Just so you know, I'm not sure if you work with...
No, I appreciate all the city's done. I, I think I've owned that building for close to twenty years now. And obviously, we have the parking across the street, massive improvement. I know, I, I see what you're doing out back, and I know it's been talked about. That's gonna be phenomenal. Unfortunately, that doesn't help, necessarily help this situation because of the fact that I need that easement to access my parking, which is, uh, defined. You know what I mean? It's beyond, it's not our customers necessarily. The two containers are choking that, that turning radius, you know, for the machine.
And two other points. One is we also had to chair the Traffic Commission, so you can also, uh, confirm what Counselor Demanbo...
Yep. I, I think that longer term, it's gonna help everything, but I think right now it's, it's not gonna help at the moment.
And the last question I have for you, Mr. Palmer, is the, you saying you have an easement to go over the leased property that she has?
Yes, sir. Yeah. I, I had a copy.
Thank you.
I read through it. I asked the engineer if there was a recorded, uh, drawing. I did, I wasn't, I did not get that, but I do have the language. I'd be happy to forward it to any of you. I'd bring it down, but that's recorded in my deed.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Palmer? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming down.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. How are you tonight?
President, um, I think I'm probably the oldest...
Can you please state, can you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Olga Lebron Sanchez. I am the property owner of Seven and Nine Mans Court. I think I'm the oldest living tenant on that street. I've been living there for about fifty years. It was my father's home, and then I took it over from him when he retired. Um, I have seen many companies come and go, businesses in that area. Some have failed, some have succeeded. She's been fortunate that she has succeeded, and I'm happy for her. But with that comes progress and problems, which she doesn't seem to understand as a neighbor. For me, it seems like she more has a supermarket than a caf, a cafeteria, or whatever it's called, a cafe. I think her occupancy is higher than what is expected, as well was given to her property originally, because the traffic there is horrible. It's more horrible around the holidays, as she stated. Um, as she stated, the reason why we park on the sidewalk in front of our home is because I have a handicapped grandchild. And we need to make sure we have access, if anything happens to him, that somebody's able to get out of the street immediately with him. His handicap is permanent. It's not temporary, which she does not seem to understand. She has threatened us before in the past about the parking spaces, and it's public parking. We can't do nothing about it. In her parking lot, yes, she has the two containers. They were both parallel, and yes, they do take up three spaces. Yes, she has two, um, dumpsters, which take up two more spaces. In the winter, if you're gonna give her a second container, all that snow usually piles up against those containers, against that dumpster. I can't get out of my driveway half the time in the winter. I can't pull into my driveway in the winter either, because the way the snow is so impacted. The way the snow is also impacted on the both sides of the road is just so tight that it's hard to even get two cars to cut up and down that street. The no parking on her side of the street, I understand what she's saying, that she cannot control her customers, but she can encourage them to not park there, and it seems like she's encouraging them. She doesn't do anything about it. Because even if we say things, they just laugh at us, say things to us, and I, at this point, I just let it go. I don't bother anymore. I've been there for over fifty years. I have planned to live there for another twenty, thirty years, hopefully. That's my home. I shouldn't have to be driven out by somebody who's ambitious for what she wants and for her needs and not thinking about the community. She's just thinking about herself, and that's unfortunate. There's already been one car accident. One of the dumpsters, one of her waste companies hit my son-in-law's truck, did some severe damage, because the second dumpster was there, and he could not back out accordingly, and he did ruin her, his truck. Again, that was her company. You can't pull in. There's no way for him to take out and lift those dumpsters, pull into her space to belift them, or even pull up Mans Court to do it, and then back up accordingly. There's just not enough space and room. Even if, if the winter comes, it's gonna be worse. She's growing. I see that. But she needs to move, or she needs to do something, because the parking is getting miserable. It's just getting bad. It's, 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 people just park there. People don't listen, and it's disrespectful for me. And I'm sure it's disrespectful for my tenants and for my neighbors, not for her, because she doesn't live there. She's have to deal with it every time, but we have to deal with it every single day.
Do you think when the parking out back is complete, that will help your situation?
You know, I have a double, I just thought about that. I see as it being helpful, but I don't see it being helpful for the tenants or the neighbors of Mans Court. Just because I see that a lot of the people, the gentleman who was just here, his tenants take a lot of those empty spaces that we were using. So then we now have spaces. When that construction first started, we had to park on the parking lot across the street from where the China Delight was, with that parking lot. We had to park there. That did become a bit of inconvenience, again, for the emergency purpose of my grandson. Her employees and her staff and her truck that she uses for deliveries, again, also park in that space. So again, it limits space for us. I don't see her customers wanting to use that space. Pardon what I'm gonna say, they're lazy. They don't wanna take that walk. That's why they park where they park. They park where there's no parking, just because they want easy access to get in. They're there ten, fifteen minutes, sometimes longer, because her business is growing. She's constantly busy. It's just, it's too much. I do hope that it does become beneficial. We are hoping that at least we will get one handicap space, because we did ask for one, and we were told it was denied, because just the way, the width of the street is, it was, it wasn't gonna be doable. But we're hoping that with the new parking lot, that we'll at least be able to have one handicap, even though it'll be far from the home, but at least we'll have something that's close to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in this matter? Please step forward. How are you tonight? How are you tonight? Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Julia Santos, and I'm representing the 476 to 482 Main Street residents. I live in 480 specifically, though. So, we, I'm mostly speaking for the parking lot out back that we use. We each get one space during the winter. Most of those spaces are used up because of the snow, so we get less spaces in general. Then we have to park up front. Yes, the parking that you guys are now creating out back will be a little more beneficial for us, but it's still a little far for us as well. We have, each resident has at least one child, and one of them is autistic. We tend to have to have him leave the house, go to the hospital for anything and everything because he tends to hurt himself a lot. So, we need to have access outside of our parking space, which is completely blocked, and we only have one way out. So, whenever that spot, that little hole, the space is just enough for one of our cars to go through, it's blocked up by all the other cars that are from the customers or the containers. We tend to be stuck. We have to wait. We have to go looking for these people. We have no way to get out. In an emergency, if one of the other children, one of the adults have an issue, no ambulance can get through to our house because up front is also the main street, always blocked, always has cars. So, it's difficult for us in general just to have access to our own home. So, that's mostly what I want to say about these containers.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak in this matter? Yes.
So, I just want to go back to Mike, where he said he has the, how do you call it, the right to pass through. I spoke with my landlord. He's not aware, so I would like to get a copy as well, if he has on his deed, because as far as we know, he
Does not.
He does not have it. My neighbors, I understand. I understand if I grow, and I am looking for a storage space that I could rent just to storage. Again, that was the fastest way I could find to provide for the customers for the summer, and I do understand them. And I, again, I'm not here to fight with anyone the same way if they believe I have to move because it's not right for me. If you have a problem at home and it's not for you, again, if it's not their problem, my problem, it's not my, their, my problem, their problem, right? But we're trying to work as much as we can, but I just, I don't know. It's, I'm trying to run a business. I'm looking for my business, yes, and I understand the concern, but it's the same way if I have three parked cars there. So, if I, you know, my employees will park there. If I park there, if everybody parks there all day long, they're still going to have the same problem, right? So, in my head, it doesn't make sense.
And in terms of the square footage, to the lease, it says 2,300.
Yeah, it could be on the land because on the ground, it's not all the way, all the way to the store. It's not the same size upstairs, downstairs because there's dirt there, right? So, it's, it's a shorter basement. So, that's not accurate what he said. It's on my lease, it's 2,300 square foot. So, I do have production down there. I'm a bakery as well, so I do produce down there. So, it's not all for storage. In regards to delivery, yes, I can get produce every day, but I cannot get imported products every day. I'm not a restaurant. I'm a retail. I'm a bakery. I have a butcher shop, and I don't function like he knows the restaurant function. So, there's no, it's not equivalent to compare one to another, you know? It's, it's different. I have different vendors. Most are on product products from Brazil, and it's, again, I do have to buy weekly, once a week, and then in more quantity to get the better deal. So, but produce, yes, I do get it every day, like a restaurant.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak in this matter? Seeing no one.
Make a motion that we continue the public hearing to, I will draw.
Yes. Please step forward, sir.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Your counsel, your 476, 482. I would invite the council to go into Casanova and to decide for themselves what that property functions as, as a business, because when you walk into the, the main door, the primary, the first section is a grocery meat cabinet. The expansion that they took over, which was formerly the laundromat, when they doubled their space, the whole other side is a cafe. It serves pastry, coffee, beverages, pre-made foods. So, for her to characterize her property as a grocery is grossly inaccurate because I would bet, I would like to, I don't know, illustrate or differentiate the amount of traffic that goes to a grocery versus a coffee, pastry, sandwich shop. And I would also invite the council to just park your car on Main Street at 7:00 a.m., stay for an hour, and watch the traffic. You will often see tractor trailers park in front of my building, 52-foot trailers unloading, and you'll see her clientele, who act selfishly, but that's how customers are, park, double park. Anyone that knows there, there's a lot of restrictions on that Mann's Court going up Main Street in that direction, going towards the Rotary. There are several restricted spaces, but I pull in, I tried to pull in. I've been trying to understand this when I saw the special permit being applied for. I went over there, and there was three contractor trucks with a guy sitting in the trucks with their doors open, eating and drinking what they just purchased at Casanova. So, it's, it's not a grocery. It's not a meat market. It's a multifunctional, successful, hybrid of sorts. That's all I understand.
Yes, Counselor Viola.
I'll just wait till you're done, but go ahead.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to Senate Communication to the Fire Department, requesting them to look at this special permit and to weigh in on it to see if they could fit fire apparatus behind the building.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Counselor DeMist.
I think, based on some of the things we've heard this evening in terms of the information, I think the more prudent thing to do is go to committee. I think having, getting some feedback from Commissioner Quinn, because some, some good comments were raised about certain setbacks, requirements, and I'd also like to get our hands on a copy of the easement, if that's available. So, that, I think there's some, some homework to be done on the petition, but
Thank you.
It's a discussion that would, I think, would work in committee.
An informative motion.
Second.
Well, I would have to continue the public hearing, but I don't know if there was any other folks that wanted to speak.
Is there anyone else that want to speak in this matter? Please step forward.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I mean, because I, I am a butcher shop, a grocery store, a retail. I did the expansion. The city knows everything. They allow me to do that. I did everything by the code, so I don't agree with what he said. You know, I am a grocery store, a butcher shop, and a bakery. That's my business, and I do not have
Seats there.
There's no seats there. It's grab and go. Same thing at Pizza Market. Pizza Market, there's no seats. There's no space. Come and go. And Fox Dean, that's their attendant. There's no space, and their clients keep putting, you know, their cars in my space. And I kind of close my eyes because I know they come and go, but the other delivery guys, they also put it like across my space to deliver for the restaurant. So, it's my space. Do you know what I mean? And then, I just don't get it, but that's it. I just want to be sure I speak my mind because I think that's the right that I have, at least to speak.
That's why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until October 7th, send it up to special permits. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Thank you.
President, could you explain what happened? Let them know.
Yes. So, this is continued, and before it gets come back here, we'll more than likely set it up for a committee meeting, and you'll be notified.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda on a public hearing is to determine whether the property located at Maywood Terrace is a nuisance as the term is used in Mass. General Law, Chapter 139, Section 1. A communication dated August 6, 2025 was received from Benjamin Cordak. There was also a communication dated September 3, 2025, was received from the city solicitor, Mark Salvati.
Make a motion that communications received may be part of the permanent record. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Counselor Boone.
I'd also like to submit for the record, an email I received from Mr. Benjamin Cordak at 4 Maywood Terrace. I'll forward it to
What's the date of it?
The date is today at 4:42 p.m. I will forward it to you, Lindsay, to send to the council and make it part of the permanent record.
A motion and a second. There's a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
I have one more.
Go to the floor.
One more communication. Sorry, President Dillon. I received a text at 7:59 p.m.
Are you going to email me that text?
I'm going to email this, the same. I was going to make a motion that it also be part of the permanent record, or can I not do that?
I'll just ask him if you're going to email me the text and make sure you don't text me the text.
Oh, I will. Yes, I am going to email it too.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
So, the text is
So, communication dated today?
Yep, today, 7:59 p.m. From 6 Maywood Terrace. There are two pictures attached about the condition of the property, and I will forward that via email.
Who's it from?
Ellica, and I don't have her last name here.
I think she spoke with, before.
Yep. She, oh, Ellica certainly sent plenty of communications.
So, Ellica of 6 Maywood Terrace. That's enough.
Yes, yes. I've known Ellica for a while, a long time. So, I'll go ahead and send these, but I would like the council to also see these pictures. I don't know how we, should I just pass it around?
I would accept them for the record first.
Okay.
So, move.
Let me do that.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor.
You don't have to send them to me now. It is
Any opposed?
Okay. So, I'm going to, there's two pictures of, of the property here. I'll let you all be the judge of what, what you see. I know what I see, but I'll, I'll let you all be the judge.
Thank you.
Lou did not see it yet, but he can get it.
Can you explain, sorry, could you explain, so the public knows?
Oh, sure. So, for those of you that are watching at home, 4 Maywood Terrace has been the subject of a nuisance
The pictures.
The pictures, right. As 4 Maywood has been the subject of a nuisance hearing for quite some time. The pictures that were forwarded to me were described as there's still more work to do. What I saw in the pictures, frankly, I have more trash in front of my house right now, and that's not an exaggeration. I literally do because, you know, our trash people don't take away certain things anymore, so I'm still trying to, you know, get them out of there. But I'll leave you all to judge what you saw in those pictures. I saw two reciprocal containers, one old, looks like a screen stormed door, and then, and then some recycle bags, which will probably go out at the next round. So, that's what I saw. And if, if I could continue, and so, yes, this property has been subject to the nuisance hearing. There's been all kinds of problems at this property. As you all know, you've all been so kind and, and very patient as we move forward to this process. The people who were living there were absolutely a nuisance. There's no doubt about it. This has been going on for a long time, and for us to get to a point where we decide to declare something a nuisance takes a long time. One of the concerns I think the neighbors have is if we just let this go, that it may happen all over again. Now, it, I suppose it could, but here's the difference. The next time around, we have all of this evidence in front of us, watched it all unfold. If this happens again at this particular property with this particular tenant, I don't see us starting all over. I see us saying, hold the phone. This isn't going to happen again. Here's all the evidence we have from before. We're going to stop it in its tracks right now. I think we're well within our rights to do that. So, I think that's where the difference is. Now, I'd like to point out, if this property were sold tomorrow and someone else buys the home, we can only hope, as all of us who live in a neighborhood, we can only hope that it's someone who will be the person who wants to take care of their property. This council has no guarantee over that, and nor does the person who owns the property. So, that's a whole different issue. But with the current owner, if this becomes an issue again, I don't see us waiting a few years. I see us saying, no, not again. And I'd like to hear from some of you on, on how you feel about that. And I don't think I'm taking a broad stroke view of it. I think Attorney Salvati would probably agree with me based on the amount of evidence that we have. But President Dillon, I don't know if you would be so kind to open up to the council to comment?
Absolutely. Counselor DeMist.
I think, based on, you know, Solicitor Salvati's memo, he basically outlines what we're equipped with and what tools we have in our toolbox to address this. And I think, you know, the, the process of government is slow. We had, we had to be very deliberate here. We took a lot into account. There's been a lot of work done. There was certain dynamics going on at this property that we had no control over, particularly directly as the city, or no legal remedies that we could actively engage in. And I think the homeowner has done that, based on the pictures I saw tonight. Looked like an average yard in the city. But the landlord's on notice. It's pretty clear, after all these meetings, that we're not going to go on this carousel again if the, if the issues, if the issues recur, and the city would be well in our rights to move forward with, with the legal remedies that are afforded to us under the nuisance law. So, I think the work that we've done has been more than judicious. I know the neighbors have been frustrated because we had to follow the process that's afforded us, but I hope they know that we're doing this in the best interest of the neighborhood and trying to get that property cleaned up because even if it were to move forward on a nuisance, there's no guarantees in terms of what would, what would occur with the property, especially if it was either sold, raised, or whatnot, under, under the nuisance law. So, I think the inconvenience may have remained for a little bit longer, but I think we, I think we've been very judicious, and I commend Counselor Marissa Bruin for actively pursuing this on behalf of her constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor DeMangbo.
I support what Counselor Marissa Bruin has said here. I mean, this has been going on for seven years. Seven years too long. The circumstances, we've heard it all. Counselor Marissa Bruin has done an outstanding job pursuing this and trying to do right by the residents, the neighbors in that area. The city has exhausted a lot of time and resources on trying to handle this matter and correct it, and, and I agree. If, if this should continue with the next tenant, I think you just, you have to just start from this point on and attach the last seven years because the landlord has not changed. So, therefore, we can't just erase the history on that property. It needs to be daisy-chained, and it has to be on a continuous. We have put these people on notice numerous times for months on end here. This has been going on. We've brought it through legal channels, courts, we're building commissioners, and border health, and, and our city solicitor. I mean, at, at what point do we sit here and say enough is enough? And we, we have to draw the line. And we have to draw the line in the sand and say, that's it. We're not going to do this any longer. Whether it's this tenant or the next tenant. And if it should change hands, the next person that buys that property needs to be on notice. There needs to be a jacket on this property that they need to take possibly at the building department. I don't know where. But there should be some sort of literature, some sort of documentation that says the history of this property and what's been going on. And that goes for every property in this city. We're not here to let our properties just go awry and let people do whatever they want to do. We have a set of codes, we have sets of ordinances. We don't need more. We need the enforcements of what we have on the books now. And this is one of those times we need to enforce the ordinances and the codes that we currently have in our city. So, I support you on this, and I thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Toro.
Thank you. Councilor Marissa Bruin, good job on this. This has been...
Collectively, I'd say.
This has been, this has been one that's been in front of us pretty much the whole time I've been on the council. But I think City Solicitor Salvati said it best in his memo. Essentially, the owner has shown progress in this property. Yes, it took some time. Maybe it took a little bit of a fire to be lit, to actually get it to be done. But in the two years or the year and a half that we've been actively dealing with this, we've seen progress. It took a long time to get the tenants out, which seemed to have been the major problem, right? Since that time, the property appears to have been cleaned up. These pictures that circulated today are much better than a lot of houses that I see driving around Woburn. There's an active building permit to essentially what appears to renovate a kitchen, install a new door and some windows. In a perfect world, the house would be renovated. Everything will be done. But money doesn't grow on trees, right? You can't do everything. So, I think the steps have been taken to try to bring this property up to habitable standards so it's not an eyesore to the neighborhood. And I think we have to give the landlord, the owner, somewhat of a benefit of the doubt with the progress that she's made, with the understanding, stern understanding, that if she slips up again, like Councilor Marissa Bruin said, this isn't going to be a whole nother process. We are going to go right towards the enforcement of things. I appreciate the process, I appreciate the progress. It has to continue. After this is done, there's going to be other work that needs to be done. Being somebody that owns several investments, several rental properties, there's continuous maintenance and upkeep that needs to be done to keep these properties from getting to this point, even when you have tenants in place. So, continue to renovate it, do everything above board, keep the property cleaned. We'd prefer you not to come in front of us again because it's not going to be pretty if it does. And that's my two cents on it, so.
Thank you. Councilor Papalatto.
Thank you. Councilor Marissa Bruin, I think you did an amazing job of guiding through this process. I know it was painful for you, it was painful for the neighbors, it was painful for us listening to this every step of the way. Ultimately, we got them to the right spot, and I think you did an amazing job. So, I take my hat off to you. But as much as nobody wants to go through that again, there's a legal process that we have to go through. And as much as we'd like to rip them out of there the next time this happens, I'm not sure we're going to be able to do it so quickly. Maybe we will, but I think there's a legal process that protected the tenant in there for a long, long time. And unfortunately, it's probably going to, if the same thing were to happen in the same house to the same owner, there's a process to that that we have to follow as well, so. But again, I take my hat off to what you did there because it was amazing. But there is a process to this, and the legalities of it are going to dictate how we move.
Thank you. Councilor Viola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to just echo everything that everybody else has said previously and give my kudos to Councilor Marissa Bruin for her due diligence in seeing this from the beginning to right now. I do agree that if this does come before us again, there probably will be a different answer at the end. But thank you to everybody for all your work that you did on this, to department heads in different departments.
Councilor DeMills.
Just through the chair to the Madam Clerk. With regards to procedure, what would the procedure be for dispensing with this matter this evening? Would it be placing it on file? Yeah, because I know in Attorney Salvati's, I know in Attorney Salvati, Solicitor Salvati's memo, it mentioned dismissing, and I don't think that language fits what the action we want to take here this evening. I think it's just placing it on file so that it's still fresh in our mind, and we're not dismissing it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Everyone's good? Can open the public?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Good evening. Just state your name and address, please.
Debbie McGlaughlin, 23 Phase Street, Wilmington.
Thank you, you have the floor.
I don't have any questions. I just am here to answer your questions.
Yes, Councilor Marissa Bruin.
Thank you. Deborah, there are some, a little bit of, a couple of bags of recycle bags on the property. I assume you're waiting for the next time that those can be put out?
Right.
Right? And I saw your recycle bins also in the picture. There is a storm door there. I assume that'll be gone soon?
Yeah, I have a bunch of stuff in the house, too, that I have to, I'll get it all cleaned up.
Yeah, let's be mindful not to let it collect. And as I'm saying those words, I'm thinking of the pile that's on the side of my house, but I'll have it gone. Including an old bed that my daughter took apart, but it'll be gone this Saturday. So, if you could just continue to be mindful. And at the end of the day, a lot of this was in your control in the beginning. There is no doubt. And you quickly lost control, to the point that my fellow counselor, Papalatto, made. Once the tenants were in your home and things got out of control, it literally, because of the law, became out of your control.
Yeah.
And you, I recall, at a meeting, you told us you went onto your property to talk to the tenants, and you were removed by the police department from your own property.
Yep.
That's wrong.
Yep.
And there are laws that need to change in our city and our state because of that. And I am, I know Councilor DeMills and Councilor Toro asked if they could help sponsor this, but I am working on active legislation for the city to be able to have more control when it comes to landlords.
Yeah.
Right? The other piece, that's a bigger thing. I think the tide might be changing a little bit based on what we saw in court that day.
Yeah.
If you recall, Attorney Salvati thought that it might get tied up in court for a long time. And at the end of the day, it did not. The tenants were told by the judge...
I paid them $3,000. Otherwise, it would have got dragged out.
Either way.
Yeah.
Money well spent, my friends.
Absolutely, I agree.
So, and I caution you, Deborah. My tolerance, the neighborhood's tolerance for any kind of shenanigans over there, zero. I can't say it any clearer. So, I'm happy to put this on, not dismiss it. I don't think it should be dismissed, to Councilor DeMills' point, but to put it on file. And we will continue to monitor very closely. But one call, one phone call, we'll be back here. Okay?
Understood.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Good evening. Just state your name and address, please.
I am for J.A.M.F. reform.
Can you please state your name and address?
I'm sorry?
Can you state your name and address?
Hello. John, come for help. He might sound helping.
So, your name and address?
Are you here for another matter?
This is 310 Main Street.
Yeah, this is not, this is a public hearing for the nuisance hearing.
Oh, so we didn't need to, like...
I can talk to you after, I can talk to you after me.
Thank you.
Your matters got sent to committee. You'll get a call from the city clerk's office. It's got sent to committee, okay?
Do I have to close the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There is a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion that the Fort Maywood Terrace matter is placed on file.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on the agenda is from the committee reports. So, Haley for a special event permit for domestic violence on October 25, 2025. A communication from the committee was received, ought to pass.
Make a motion that the committee report be adopted?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item is on a citizen's participation, a petition by Ken Prowley to discuss amending the language of the Woburn zoning ordinance, Section 35, protected use accessory dwelling units.
Make a motion that the matter be referred to the committee on the as.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Next item on communications reports, communication from License Commission regarding not adopting General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12D, dated August 25th, August 28th, 2025, excuse me.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, on the basis of the recommendation of this letter,